Open up the council meeting for May 14, 2018. We'll begin our meeting with an invocation by Pastor Steve Parks from the Bible Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mike Klinghammer. Get off the police rides and remove your hats.
Shall we pray? Father, we come to you this evening and ask for your blessings on this meeting. We're truly grateful for our community and the life that we enjoy here. We ask, Father, that you be with these elected officials as they carry out the stewardship that they've been entrusted to by the citizens of our county. Lord, for the public good, we ask as they weigh proposals and projects that they would choose and you give them the wisdom to choose the course that would be best for our county. We pray for those who perhaps have come to exercise their right to be heard in this meeting. We ask, Father, for clarity of thought on their part, that they be able to express their perspective. Father, we would hear one another with respect. And, Father, also, we just thank you at this time for the life that we enjoy here in St. Charles County, for the good that our community does, one for another. And we pray, Father, for your richest blessings again on this meeting. We ask it in Christ's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here. Thank you. So we'll begin next with conditional use permit, Bill Number 4576. Ninety-six. I'm sorry, ninety-six.
Robert's going to speak, so I need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. My name is Robert Myers, and I'm the Planning and Zoning Division Director. The first bill that you have before you tonight is Conditional Use Permit Requests for a automobile sales lot in its own C-2 General Commercial District. It joins the city of Forstel. It's located on the I-70 North Service Road. And actually, you might consider this to be a renewal of use that was here for many years. It was a automobile service lot or sales lot from the 1980s to about two years ago. And since that time, conditional use permits became required for sales lots. So there was a lapse of about two years when it ceased being used for this purpose. So now the applicants are coming back, the owners are coming back requesting that this use be reestablished and with a conditional use permit. They're not proposing to expand. They're proposing to use the lot basically as is, but with maintenance and cleaning up the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the county council approve this request without any conditions. And furthermore, they recommended that it meets the conditional use permit requirements.
Thank you, Robert.
And then I have the applicant, Pat Engold.
Good evening, gentlemen.
I will just swear you in, sir.
I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Yes. Good evening. Thank you all for your service. I just wanted to come up and give anyone the opportunity, if they had any questions, for me. I'm excited to get going out at the new place. I've been approached by several people as I've been working on cleaning it up and have actually been told that it hasn't looked that good for quite some years, so kind of excited about that. Just a regular guy. You know, I'm not going to be having junk automobiles. My vehicles will probably value from three to 20,000 as I continue to grow. It may, you know, be more than that eventually one day, I don't know. But, you know, it's not going to be a shady-looking operation. It's going to be very professional, very well displayed and lit. And just want to make it look very nice and just have a very professional business. So I would be open to any questions, and I would appreciate any considerations that the board may give me.
Any questions this time? If not, we'll open it up to public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks again.
I have no more speakers on that bill. Oh, I take that back. Arnie Deanoff has subjects 4596, 4598, and 4599.
Mr. Chairman, I would like the department head shouldn't comment if I speak or not. Mr. Bob Schnarr just made some uncuff, unprofessional remarks, and I ask that you disperse that type of conduct from county employees and department heads and managers. Bill Number 4596, this property has been the subject of many complaints to code enforcement into our community development department. Even though the planning director authorized or didn't put any restrictions or conditions on this property, I would ask that you put the following conditions to make sure that our code is enforced and to make sure that property values are enhanced. Number one, that no licensed vehicles be allowed anywhere on the property. Number two, no derelict vehicles, meaning flat tires, broken windows, broken-down engine, can't start is a derelict vehicle. No derelict vehicles be allowed to be stored anywhere on the property. No parts or no barrels be stored outside of the building. No materials be stored outside of the building. And that total cars that may have been involved in an accident, and they may be trying to recover fees from an insurance company, that they cannot remain on the property for more than 45 days. I think we need to start putting stipulations and conditions on these type of conditional use permits, because as we know, some people do it, put together a good product and follow the rules and regulations, and some want to escape by the rules and bring down property values across the county. So I see you ask that you add the following conditions to this ordinance and conditional use permit. Thank you.
And I guess I need to read that bill. Might be helpful. Bill Number 4596, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance granting conditional use permits, CUP 1802, for automobile sales to James O'Donnell, property owner, and Fast and Friendly Car and Truck Sales LLC, in care of Patrick E. Engold Jr., leasee of the property here and after applicants.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on the council? Yes?
This is in my district. This has been a car lot for nearly 40 years. The last seven years I've been on the council, I've not heard one complaint about it. The gentleman is correct. He's done a lot to clean it up, and I think he'll do a good job running a lot because he put a lot of investment and sweat equity in that lot already. So I don't see any problems. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval. Staff did as well. And like I said, it's just a continuation of a use that's already been there for nearly 40 years.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cronin. With that, we'll move on to Bill 4598.
Bill Number 4598, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel. An ordinance granting conditional use permits, CUP 1803B, for a restaurant to Chandler Hill Holdings LLC, property owner.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. If it would be permissible, I'd like to make a presentation addressing the several applications rather than doing them separately, if that's okay with you. In the fall of 2017, the community development department was approached by an architect and also attorney working behalf of Chandler Hill Winery, asking for feedback on what zoning approvals have been granted and what would be necessary for expansion of their outdoor deck. And so in subsequent discussions with the property owner's representative, they indicated that they had some things that they would like to achieve by amending their conditional use permit conditions for their winery, which was approved in 2006. And so what's before you tonight, I see as kind of an outgrowth of those discussions that took place over the last few months. To be more specific, the applicant's attorney indicated that Chandler Hill had two specific conditions that reflect wineries as defined in 2006. But the definition of a winery has changed since 2006, and so the Chandler Hill would like to operate as a winery and produce wine under the current definition of winery. This is in the words of the applicant. And so they want to amend their 2006 conditional use permit to remove two conditions, including a condition that 75% of the wine for sale onsite must be produced from grapes either grown on the premises or grown on an area of not less than five acres in size within St. Charles County. And second, in any winemaking year, excuse me, the quantity of wine consumed by or delivered to customers in the winery should not exceed two times the quantity of wine currently in production in the winery. How I would interpret that last number five condition, in reviewing conditional use permits and public hearings and the notes of meetings for years and years, it's pretty clear that pretty much everyone has been interested in the idea of wineries not being wine bars, but they actually, you know, be wineries. And so that number five was in 2006, one of the provisions of the definition of winery, but it's no longer in place now. So Chandler Hill testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission that they proposed to produce wine and operate their winery in the current standards. The representative has testified that they intend to crush, ferment, and bottle on the premises, and also testified that in 2017, they produced 18,500 bottles of wine. It was noted at the public hearing that St. Charles County Council in 2013 approved the same requests for these conditions to be removed for Balducci Winery. Again, in 2013, it was the pretty much the exact same wording for Balducci. Second, Chandler Hill indicates that they've been operating a restaurant since 2009 with county permits and hosting special events for some years. And they indicated that as long as they're amending the conditions for a winery, it would make some sense for them to formalize what they've been doing over the years with conditional use permits that would, are now requirements for any new special events held out in the agricultural zoning district. Again, they indicate they've been holding the special events for some years, but they feel like this would be a way to kind of, again, formalize their zoning approvals. And third is a housekeeping measure. Chandler Hill is interested in updating their legal description to reflect its current 42 acres. So taken together, these, this is what's before you as one request by Chandler Hill, but in effect, it's in several parts. In terms of the conditional use permit standards in this case, a restaurant and special events are conducted on this 42-acre tract with relatively few houses nearby, and it has a long driveway to accommodate traffic coming to and from the events. And we also have nearly a decade of experience with the restaurant and the special events, during which time I can find only one noise complaint, and that was in 2010, and that was for amplified music. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this application at their April 18 meeting, and at that meeting, three people speaking on behalf of other wineries indicated they didn't necessarily object to the restaurant or outdoor events, but they were concerned that Chandler Hill was not seriously pursuing production and marketing as a winery. And I think some of their comments, and my thinking was this concern about the condition of the winery industry as a whole in St. Charles County. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of the two conditional use permits as conforming to the CUP criteria, as well as recommending approval to amend the conditions for Chandler Hill's existing conditional use permit. And the Planning and Zoning Division concurs with these recommendations.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions at staff right now? Hearing none, so we'll open up to...
Mr. Goss.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Brad Goss. My address is 120 South Central, Suite 700, St. Louis, Missouri 63105. I represent the applicant, Chandler Hill LLC, and we are applying for an amendment to our existing conditional use permit as it relates to a winery. We're requesting to do the exact same thing that this council approved back in 2013 with respect to Balducci Winery. And essentially, what has happened is from the time when we got our original conditional use permit back in 2006, the county has substantially changed its definition of a winery. And so we want to, our 2006 permit conformed to what was the then-definition, and since that is no longer the definition, and you have different requirements, we are seeking to amend our conditional use permit as it relates to the winery to comply with those requirements. And so the deletion of the two paragraphs that Robert mentioned no longer apply in your current definition. And then we will otherwise, we've added to our conditional use permit that we will comply with all of the other requirements that your ordinance has with respect to a winery. So that's what we're doing with the winery amendment. As it relates to the seeking of the conditional use permit for the restaurant and for the wedding venue, it's because since 2006, again, the county's changed its regulatory system. Back in 2006, there was not a conditional use permit category for weddings or for restaurants that would fit this application. And from the beginning, there has been a restaurant almost from the beginning, and the county's been issuing permits. Health Department's been coming out inspecting it. We've been going through all of that regulatory oversight and have passed all of those kinds of permits and concerns. And what we're doing now is simply conforming to your regulations. So the operation isn't changing, the hours of operation aren't changing as far as that goes, so that's all remaining the same. And I would suggest to you that what we're doing is really consistent with other wineries in the area. And I will take you quickly through my presentation. I just wanted to give you that preface so you understood where we were, what we were doing as an overview. At the prior hearing on the conditional use permit, there were two things that I said that were incorrect, and I want to correct the record. We had done a search for conditional use permits for wineries and were unable to find conditional use permits with regard to two of the wineries, and neither had the staff. And so I noted that in a table that I presented. What we did not realize is that those wineries were actually inside the city limits of Augusta, so that those were actually zoned commercial. So there's no conditional use permit, not regulated by the county, but they're zoned commercial. So I want to correct the record as far as that goes, and that'll be included in the materials I've submitted to you tonight. So just to quickly take you through our presentation, Chandler Hill is located off of Defiance Road in the wine country of St. Charles. The area is zoned agricultural, and all of the area around us is zoned agricultural. We do need to have a conditional use permit in order to operate as a winery and is to operate with restaurant or wedding venues under the current plan and system of the county ordinances. We have submitted a concept plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which they reviewed and staff reviewed as well and approved. We provide on that concept plan the location of our vineyards, which meet the five-acre requirement. We've shown the areas of our parking, which are already built and installed, and we have a paved access road from Defiance Road up to our main facility, which is in the southern part of our site. All of our winemaking equipment is located in that facility. The restaurant is also located there as well. And there's a deck for outdoor dining as well as part of that facility. There is a shuttle that is provided to take any patrons who are parking in the lower lot up to the winery. We provide that specifically because there may be people with disabilities, that we want to make sure that they can park there, and we will take them up to the winery and meet their needs in that regard. There's also, of course, handicap parking as well next to the winery, but we provide both as far as that's concerned. The site plan also shows our buffer area that we were required to have from the beginning as part of our conditional use permit, and we have maintained that throughout. We also obtained the necessary special use permit to access Defiance Road that was required under our original conditional use permit and have maintained that. So with respect to the history of Chandler Hill, I've also already mentioned, we were approved under ordinance Number 6134 back in 2006. And as part of our history, we did have certain requirements that were added to our CUP that were then in effect with respect to production of wine that was consumed on-site. There was a limitation on the amount of consumption, and there's a limitation with respect to wine that would be produced from St. Charles grapes in the area, and that those have now been modified, and we are going to comply with the current requirements. Chandler Hill has been making wine throughout its history. I'm just going to note some of the awards that they have received. In 2015, the Missouri Wine Competition, Chandler Hill received a substantial number of awards. The CV Wiley Award for the Best Norton in Missouri, the gold non-vintage black label Norton, and a silver in 2014, Lake Hawk, off dry vinyole, and a bronze medal for the 2014 Grey Horse Dry Vinyole. And so they have also been noted to be the favorite winery by Sauce Magazine, and the best winery in 2014 by The Crick's Choice in Go Magazine, and voted the number-one winery in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch Competition in 2017. So they are well-recognized winery and have worked hard to achieve that recognition in the production of their wines. In 2017, they have wine under production, and I've noted the numbers there for you. There are 1,500 gallons of vinyole that were produced from the property, that's 7,500 bottles, 600 gallons of Norton that were supplied from Herman-Hawf Winery, the grapes were, that's 3,000 bottles, and then 1,600 gallons of Chambrescent that were supplied, the grapes are supplied by Mary Whalen from St. Charles County, and that produced 8,000 bottles. There are 25 bottles of wine aging in a combination of both Noblesse and Chandler Hill, which means there's 59 gallons of wine per barrel that are currently in those 7,400 bottles that are currently being aged. So Chandler Hill does have the winemaking equipment to make wine for crushing, distemming, the chemistry, the sorting, and the tank and barrel storage that is necessary to make wines from scratch. And I believe Mark Price from the county did go out to our facility on Thursday, met with the owner, one of the owners of Chandler Hill, and he gave him a tour, and he noted that equipment was present. And Chandler Hill pays all the necessary state and federal taxes that any other winery would pay, and that includes the tax on all bonded wine that's brought into the state, and they abide by all state and federal wine laws. As far as the rationale of the conditional use permit is concerned, I'm not going to go into great detail of that. I think that you can, I'll refer you to the materials that we've supplied. The bottom line is that we believe that we do meet the requirements for the conditional use permit. We believe staff has done an excellent job of outlining and meeting those requirements, and we're very pleased that the Planning and Zoning Commission also agreed with that and gave us the unanimous recommendation. So again, not to, I'm going to kind of roll through this in the interest of time. I would note that we do have neighborhood support. Dr. Sudikim submitted a letter in support of the winery, and that's something that Chandler Hill has, again, reached out to the neighbors and tried to be a good neighbor. They check in with them periodically and say, "Everything okay? Anything that you're concerned about?" And that's something that, again, they're trying to be proactive as far as that goes. With the surrounding wineries, I think you're familiar with them, Balducci, Noblesse, Augusta, Montel, Sugar Creek Winery, as well as Yellow Farmhouse, and then the Wine Country Wine. So those are wineries that are around us. I've done a table with respect to those surrounding wineries as to what they provide. Their winery hours are more or less similar to ours. They may start an hour later or an hour earlier than we do, but basically, it's the same kind of operation in terms of hours of operation. Wedding and special events, virtually, most of the wineries provide for those. Their conditional use permits may not provide for them to have weddings. I think that's a reflection of them having older conditional use permits, but they are holding them. And then restaurants are also something that's a fairly typical feature for many of the wineries, and I've noted that in the table as well. Then I'll just take a few pictures of some of the other wineries, just to give you a sense of some of the ceremonies that occur there. Wedding at Wine Country Gardens, so wedding again at Yellow Farmhouse Winery, wedding at Sugar Creek Winery, and then Augusta Winery had another event, and then Mount Pleasant Winery, another wedding, and Montel Winery, again, another wedding. And finally, Noblesse Winery, another wedding. Those are all wineries that are in our area, and Balducci, again, another wedding, and also there's a picture of their restaurant area. So finally, what I wanted to just do is give you a flavor of the marketing of wineries, and this is somewhat serendipitous. And this is Feast Magazine, and I got the most recent copy of that, that is their winery issue. And so I've submitted that into the record, and I'll just quickly take you through the advertisements that are in that. And you'll see that basically the wineries are all kind of marketing themselves in a similar sort of fashion. You know, this first ad is by Balducci Vineyards. It's a little bit hard to read there, but they mention the winery, they mention weddings, and they mention a restaurant. So it's something that they feature. This is the Regional Restaurant Guide, and in the Regional Restaurant Guide, all of the wineries that have restaurants in St. Charles County are noted. Chandler Hill, Balducci, Defiance Ridge, and Montel Winery are all in that guide, so that somebody who's looking to have a nice meal and wine can go to any of those wineries, as well as Noblesse, of course. In this same issue, there are various wines that are featured. This is kind of an awards... This is kind of an awards section, so Montel Vineyards was showing their dry vinaigrette and featuring that on this page in the lower left-hand corner. Then Noblesse, again, had another ad that was, the tagline on that is lunch and live music, and that's the kind of thing that you see in this magazine. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and we'd appreciate your support.
Does anybody on the council have any questions?
I think you put on a great presentation as far as advertising the wine district down there, so.
We try and do that. We try to serve.
Mr. Chairman, could I remind the council that our CUP process, this is, in a sense, a second hearing on this application, and that allows for cross-examination. I don't know that the applicant will want to cross-examine Mr. Myers, but if they would want to do so, the process allows for that.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Myers at this point?
I do not. I concur in his comments and with his staff report.
Okay. Do we have any public comments?
We do. Arne Deenoff has filled out, he wants to speak on 4598 and 4599.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Arne A.C. Deenoff, public advocate and county resident. Chandler Hill is a class act, a well-established business. They're part of our community, they give back to our community, and they make our county shine across our nation, and as a matter of fact, across the world, because we are a designation for people to come to visit our wine country here in St. Charles County. We should be proud of that heritage and proud of those facts. They're only asking for conforming to our regulations. They do an outstanding job, and we need more places to eat that are sought out and needed. This is a great addition to the great wine district, and I ask that you unanimously approve both Bill Number 4598 for a conditional use permit and Bill Number 4599 for a conditional use permit. They do an outstanding job, they follow the regulations, they're a great community partner and member of our county. We should be proud to have them in our winery district, and I ask that you unanimously approve both these conditional use permit ordinances. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on Bill 4598 hearing? Now let's move on to Bill 4599. I believe we need to read that.
That's correct. Bill Number 4599, request by Michael Herbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 1803C, for building structures or open spaces for conducting weddings and our wedding receptions or other private parties to Chandler Hill Holdings LLC property owner.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or?
Do I need to get up and re-read the same information in the record because there's several, separate bills?
Mr. Chairman, I think the, Robert indicated his testimony was on both bills.
Yes.
And I think Brad is wondering whether he needs to speak again. Quite honestly, I think the council probably could make some indication in the record that you consider his comments as having been.
Yeah, I think the only reason I, you know, I had to read both bills, but I understand your comments were addressing both of those bills.
They were, and I didn't make that entirely clear, so I do want to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, conditional use permit, 4540. We've, that's on the table, and we will not be addressing that tonight, so we'll move on to public hearings on traffic regulations.
Okay, traffic regulations. We have Virginia Feeley.
My name is Virginia Feeley, and I live in Heritage, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the proposal to prohibit parking on the even side of Hampton Road. I have lived on Hampton Road for 15 years. My balcony is on the second story, and it overlooks Hampton Road. Numerous times, I have seen the emergency vehicles ease their way down Hampton, trying to get to someone who is in need. So I think this change, while it may inconvenience some of us, and I do include myself in that, it balances the needs of someone who is in critical condition and needs help and support with our inconvenience. So I ask you to support this change, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mary Brown.
I'm also a resident of Heritage, and I'm requesting the same with parking on the, no parking on the even-numbered, and that includes Plantation Point, the street of Plantation Point, as well as the Hampton Road. And our concern, of course, is that we do have an elderly population, although that is starting to change quite a bit, but we have experienced a lot of problems with emergency vehicles. And also, you know, if any delivery truck or anything comes through, it creates quite a problem. And we do have, on Hampton Road particularly, it is a very winding road, so you run into problems in that respect, too, because if people are parking on both sides of the street, it even becomes more difficult to wend your way through the street. So we would like you to consider posting the signs for no parking on the even-numbered parts of the street.
Thank you for your comments.
Ed Meyer.
My name is Edward Meyer. I'm president of the Patio Homeowners Association, Heritage Landing, and I guess I'll try to give a little brief as I can the big picture on this. This issue was actually originated with the residents themselves, which is highly unusual on the board. And it did originate as a safety issue. We have a lot of joggers and dog walkers, and it really is a safety issue. It seems in the last few years what brought this up was, we don't have a lot of residents that own pickup trucks, but apparently a lot of their visitors do. And we found situations where if just one pickup truck is parked on one side of the road with a large car, or occasionally there's two pickup trucks that happen to be parked opposite each other, it's been kind of a safety hazard for people just trying to jog or walk their dogs, or if even a car tries to get between them. And I had one lady tell me that she had enough trouble trying to get her Malibu through between these two trucks, and she really thought it would be almost impossible for an EMS or even a fire truck should that situation arise, especially on Plantation in particular. We've had situations there where two pickup trucks have parked opposite each other, unfortunately at this time, yeah, at the same time. Doesn't happen all the time, but all it has to do is happen once when an emergency comes up. And I guess basically, we've tried to contact all members in writing notifying that we were considering this, and I've only had two residents that voiced opposition to it, and that just never happens. We very rarely get this kind of support behind something like this. And there might be other objectors out there, but they haven't made this known to me. So this seems to be something that most of the residents at patio homes are behind on this. And I guess you could say at the very least, it seems to be a regrettable necessity with more and more people going to trucks instead of cars. It seems like this is something that's, time has come for us, I guess, really. But thank you very much.
Quick question, Dave.
Yes.
Could you give us an indication of how many of your patio homeowners would be in favor of this? If you were going, I'm not asking for an exact number, but if you could give us a sense of feel for.
We have 141 patio homes, and when I'm out, I talk to a lot of, especially when the weather's nice, I call them the dog walkers and joggers, they'll stop and talk to me. I've had unanimous support behind this, except for two individuals. One expressed concern during holidays, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, that they might have to park further away to come and visit relatives and that. Another gentleman has a lot of older cars, they're not antique or collector, just older cars, and they knew that when they moved into the patio homes, they'd have trouble finding free parking, and if we parked just one side of the road, they're going to have a terrible trouble finding free parking for all of his cars, you might say. But other than those two individuals, I've heard no one against this. Now, they could be there, but they haven't expressed enough concern to contact me or anyone else on the board about it, so been pretty much unanimous in favor, except for two people.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Michael, oh, gosh, lives on Mason Grove. I'm sorry, I couldn't read your, okay, that's it.
Good evening. I'm here for the stop sign on Mason Grove Drive. We've lived there about nine months now. I have two young kids, and we have a younger neighborhood. It's a subdivision with the one outlet, and coming down the hill from Cox Hill Road into the neighborhood, you can pick up speed and you have to ride your brake down to the bottom of the hill, and if you're not riding your brake, you can exceed 35 miles an hour, and it's coming from both directions, and we have pretty much what relates to a drag strip right in that area, people coming in and coming out, and we're looking for a stop sign there. It's, it would be right in the middle of a cul-de-sac, or on two ends of a cul-de-sac to disrupt that flow, to help keep, you know, my kids safe, the kids next door. I mean, even when we're sitting outside talking to our neighbors on a Friday night, people are just flying down with little regard to anyone's safety. Right after we moved in, we almost were rear-ended pulling into our driveway because someone wasn't paying attention. Last Halloween as well, a family was almost hit because someone was just on their phone and not paying attention, is going down the road and had to slam on the brakes. So we were able to obtain 45 signatures over a three-week period or so to gain approval for that from the neighborhood. I mean, it is, it's safety for the kids and the kids in the neighborhood. It's been really an ongoing issue for the last 12 years, and in the last nine months, I've tried to do as much as I could to get, you know, get it resolved. I don't want to see my friends or my kids' friends or get hurt coming to our house and trying to play, so. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Roberta Watson.
My name is Roberta Watson. I live on Hampton Road in Heritage subdivision. I'm also here in favor of the parking ban on the even side. I've lived there for 33 years. I've had people sideswipe cars trying to get through. My husband was very ill for a very long time. The fire trucks always came first when I called 911, and they always had a problem getting through. We also had a fire in our building several years ago, and the fire trucks had a horrible time getting down because there were so many people parked there. It's a serious safety issue, and I hope that you all will approve our request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Constance Mahan.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to oppose the parking on the opposite side of the street, on Hampton Road. I live on the uneven side of the street. It would be a safety issue for me, the older I'm getting. I injured my arm a few months ago and had trouble getting groceries in my car, and as I said, our neighborhood's changed a little bit. We've lived there for 11 years, and it used to be mainly elderly. Well, across the street from us is now younger people. They're parking on our side of the street already, which is already causing a problem, getting groceries in and out of the car. If I was always to have to park on the other side of the street, it would be burdensome to get groceries in. Just to give you an idea, we have detached garages, and the sidewalk is, needs to be repaired tremendously. That's been an ongoing issue. There's no way to take the groceries from the garage to our front door. So parked right out in front is the only way to do that, especially if I'm injured. A year and a half ago, my husband was in a car accident. He had a wheelchair and maneuvering a walker. To have to go, I mean, it was burdensome enough getting him in the car from the curb, okay? Again, we have a lot of elderly, and so if they have to walk further and across the street, it would be burdensome and a safety issue. We recently, I was standing out talking to a neighbor on the roadside, and car after car, there were two cars in a row, came around this curb really fast. They're young people, and again, that's new to our neighborhood. It used to be all elderly, and now we're getting more and more young people, but they're driving fast. So there's just many safety concerns. If I had groceries and trying to cross the street, because that curb comes just before our house on the other side. So if there's going to be no parking on one side of the street, then it should be on both sides of the street. I'm also concerned about property value. If we are looking at possibly selling our home in the near future, and if we were told that only parking occurs on our side of the street, it would not be good for trying to sell a house on our side of the street. Let me just see. Oh, the other issue is, in our patio homes, it's kind of a direct shot. You can see the window, and you can see all the way through our homes. So if someone's parked right outside my front door, they can see right in our house if the lights are on and it's starting to get dark outside. If strangers are parked in front of my house, you know, people I don't know, and it's happening more frequently, that's a real concern for me, for safety. So at this point, that's all I have. I think some of the solutions could be maybe limiting the times that there's parking, it might be a possibility. I know that the neighbors across the street, because they are younger, they're the primary offenders for my side of the street, my little area, because we're already dealing with a lot of those issues of the other side of the street parking on our side of the street. So if you're going to limit it to one side, I also maybe, you know, other than deliveries or whatever, and again, I mentioned that we are fixing up our place to possibly sell, so we've had a lot of delivery trucks recently, but they're there just for, you know, during business hours while they're getting that taken care of, business taken care of. This morning, I had rock delivered. If I had neighbors parked in front of my house, I would have to go to everybody's house across the street to find out who owned those cars, so I could have had that delivery made to my house. So I strongly request that, I'm very opposed to, you know, parking only on our side of the street. I mean, there either no parking or limited times or something of that arrangement. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
And the last speaker for traffic regulations is Andy Mahan.
Thank you for your time. Connie said a lot of the things, but I'd just like to reiterate some of the stuff. The way these buildings are at this apartment complex, for instance, the one I'm in, there's four units. Only the two units on the end have access to the garage right into the unit. So the middle unit, we go outside and walk around the building to get into the garage. So a lot of times, we'd like to pull up front to bring groceries in or whatever we want to bring in, and it's a, it's a big encumbrance if that's always blocked. If there's no parking on the other side, there's a potential that we'll always, our side will always be blocked, or it'll be blocked intermittently. And then for, even for the other side, if it's an older person that can't move very well, and they're parked on our side, they got well and they're parked on our side, they gotta cross all the way across the street to get to their place. But I suspect that in actuality, what's gonna happen is our side will be used for parking and the other side would be accessible to, for those people to access anytime they want as far as unloading and loading stuff, because it'll be gone quick. You know, they'll be done quick and there'll be no objections by anybody. The police won't come or anything. They'll have an open, free area and our side will be blocked often. Also, the property value issue is Connie brought up. The, the delivery truck thing, we get, just myself, I get 10, 10 deliveries a week. These delivery trucks are able to make these deliveries. And I don't know that it's necessarily a good thing to clear the other side, make sure the other side's clear, so that those people that might be influenced to drive faster be encouraged to drive faster. Yeah, it's not always great that you have to go through and weave through, but also you're not gonna do it at top speed either. A lot of us, some of those that, that are in favor of this mentioned that there's no dissent. That's not true. I've talked to six or eight people that can't come or because of health reasons or whatever, but are not for this. Myself, I didn't even know that this was happening until I was noticed by letter to come here. So, it's really, hasn't been widely advertised. And that's pretty much my whole stance.
All right. Thank you. Very much. Yes.
Can I ask who determined whether the parking was on the even side of the street or prohibited or the odd street? Is that something highway department looked at or how did, how did, how did the proposal to prohibit parking on the even side of the street become the even side instead of the odd side? Okay?
What you have before you is what was on the petition that was received in our office. So, we just reflect what the residents requested at this point and then allow deliberation to take place based on that.
Did your traffic guys look at it to say would one side be better than the other?
We have not looked at it yet. We usually allow the public comment portion to go first, so then we kind of know if there's certain things that we should be looking for. But I did, I have driven that. I'm familiar with the area. I don't know that there's a big difference between one side or the other, but like I said, this was a request that was received.
You, you make a recommendation to us after the public hearing?
Yes. Following the public hearings, we'll go out and take a look at it and come back to you with a recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no more on public, traffic regs.
That was it on the traffic?
That was it on traffic regs.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for traffic regulations and we'll open up public comment. Public comment on, we'll allow three, six speakers, three opposed and three in support of any topic and we'll do as many topics, I guess, as brought before. And our first speaker is-
Arnie Deanoff.
Thank you, members of the county council. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. At the last county council meeting, I asked Republican information on the transfer station proposal. The report and documents were given to you a month ago in closed session by Don Cole, the administrative law judge. The response from the county council staff was they will not release this information and I disagree with their determination and violation of chapter 610 of the revised state statutes of Missouri, because we have a right to know. By releasing the information on May 18th is ridiculous, bad, sloppy government and not the right thing to do. On your consent agenda, you're purporting to appoint the new corrections director by appointment of the county executive. I pray for this new fair leadership. Changes are needed. Numerous employees have contacted me with discriminatory practices happening inside our county corrections facility and with employees, violations of the personnel manage, manual, unhealthy working conditions. Salary wages and benefits are in question and need to be looked at for good quality of our employees. So, I pray for this new director. Council rule amendment, the meaning of the changes. This is the first I'm hearing of any changes. There's been no discussion, no debate. It's shameful, it's sad and it's playing politics. You're directly targeting me and our 425,000 citizens. You're mad because you want to abolish pre-filing of speaker cards, limiting freedom of speech and participation of our meetings. Two, only allowing and limiting one card, you're trying to stymie and block facts and citizen participation. Shameful and bad of your conduct. Three, I ask that the council extend the time period from three minutes to five minutes to allow to amply describe what people are trying to get across to you. I pray for the council's attempts to shun and limit public comment. They're shameful, they're derogatory and I pray that God visits each one of you and tells you that citizen participation should be your utmost priority rather than trying to get back to your couches in about a half an hour to 45-minute fashion when you're paid $17,500 a year plus health benefits and a pension. Finally, on your agenda is the Parks and Recreation, professional services, design and engineering services in the amount of $476,800. Why are we not doing these plans and these engineering plans in-house, saving taxpayer money? And why are we expending a lot of unnecessary taxpayer money? Thank you very much.
Philip Myers.
I am speaking about the amendment to a conditional use permit for the quarry that we met, we did on the 18th. And I just came, in case there were any other questions that came up about that amendment, et cetera, is where we asked for the change of the setback, which now buts up to the property that we own to the south. And I didn't know if there was anything else I needed to-
Well, when we get to that item, if we have some questions, we'll call it the other-
Okay, thank you. But I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
And the last public comment speaker is Brad Goss.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Brad Goss, 120 South Central, Suite 700, St. Louis, Missouri, 63105. And the reason I wanted to speak to you very briefly was on the Missouri Bluffs Research Park proposal that will be coming before the council to be considered on May 21st. However, I wanted to, of course, let the council know that we continue to work with those council members who are giving us input with respect to positive changes we can make to the plan. I also wanted to address some misconceptions and in fact, what we believe are erroneous statements by the attorney for the Missouri, Katie Trail Land Trust in Magnificent, Missouri. She had submitted a letter to the council that was dated April 5th, 2018, and she essentially made three arguments. One argument was that the proposed number of residential units exceeded the allowed number of residential units by 100 units. She also contended that the conservation declaration was improper, somehow not compliant with the county ordinances. And then she made the argument that the plan was not consistent with the master plan. So, very briefly, as it relates to the number of units and what's allowed, she makes a mistake and considers the golf course all commercial property. In fact, we know that's not true. It's actually residential for the most part and the reason we know that is because the Missouri courts have addressed it. In Zimmerman versus Missouri Bluffs Golf Joint Venture, that's indeed this property we're talking about, the Court of Appeals held that the property used as a golf course is deemed residential property. The only part that is commercial is the area around the clubhouse and the parking lot. So, of our 235 acres of golf course, there's about three and a half acres that would be commercial and the balance of that would be residential and that is in fact, the way the property is classified. And so, as such, that property certainly can be used and when you do the math, what you find is that instead of exceeding the number of allowed units, the number of allowed units would be 386, we are proposing 339 units. So, we're far below that. As it relates to her criticism of the conservation declaration, we are not required to do that as part of the county ordinances. We have submitted a declaration of covenants that is compliant with everything required of the county UDL. We've provided the conservation declaration because we're trying to do something more, to preserve the property. And we have taken to heart the comments about tightening that up and we are doing that to make it, make sure those restrictions do stay in place. Her last set of comments related to the master plan.
Yeah, time's up, sir. Thank you.
And I will submit a letter that outlines all of this to the council for consideration. Thank you.
There was one gentleman approached, but he had not filled out a card. So, I don't know if you want to allow that?
No, let's move on. Can we let him speak? Do you mind? I don't have a problem with that if the council is not objecting. I got three more minutes.
Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Bacon and I apologize, I wasn't aware of the procedure. So, thank you for, for giving me a moment of your time. I've lived in St. Charles County since 1980. That's 38 years, pretty simple math. And, and we've undergone a lot of changes in that time, but one of them I was just made aware of a couple of years ago, you all voted on, in unincorporated St. Charles County, you passed a, I guess, a regulation, you'd call it, an ordinance, if you will, that says that you can no longer have roosters on land in less than five acres. And now currently, we have just a little over three acres in our property. We've always had chickens and roosters and honeybees and one-time horses and all of that. And I'm prepared to, you know, follow the procedures or the zoning regulations to maybe have my property deemed agricultural or get a special use permit or, or do whatever needs to be done there. But I would like, in the meantime, to ask that you consider to amending that specific ordinance to offer some sort of guidance on something about people that have already had the livestock there on their property for that period of time, that has always been doing this for however long, but even was zoned agricultural or zoned rural residential and the area just kind of grew up around us. You know, I, one thing too, that I didn't bring up is I'm, myself a former United States Marine and I've got service awards from both Iraq wars, now that that's relevant. But one thing that I've found since, since I've returned to St. Charles County is that, you know, that's always kind of been my safe place for PTSD and anxiety and things like that. But the point of that is that, you know, the chickens and the roosters and the bees and they all help with that. You know, I take in rescue dogs and I help rehabilitate them and train them back to life. I bring other veterans around and we teach them how to do beekeeping and teach them how to, you know, kind of do urban farming as a way to kind of mitigate that stress and anxiety and whatnot. I'm perfectly happy to go have my rooster registered as an emotional support animal, if you'd like, but I don't know that that's necessarily, you know. So, so I would like some guidance there if I would, some sort of grandfathering in. Obviously, the Missouri constitution talks about, you know, laws retroactive in their operation. The Missouri Supreme Court has decided that that is specifically due to civil laws, not criminal laws, which obviously this would be a civil law, excuse me. So, I would like some guidance there because, you know, for the past 38 years, we've had chickens and roosters on our property, it's never been a problem. It was agricultural land when we bought it. We bought the house and the barn and the shed and the field and everything. So, so I'm willing to do what I need to do to stay in compliance with the regulation, but I would like some additional guidance on a grandfathering policy.
Okay. Thank you. Are we, are we currently looking at our regulations as a-
You think around chickens, that Councilman Brazel's asked for some work being done on chickens. The rooster regulation that the gentleman is referring to is the one related to the animal code that you all enacted in 15, I believe.
And, and those would apply to a three-acre lot?
Yes, it says anything less than five acres, you can't have a rooster.
Okay. Well, we may have to take a look at that.
Can we ask this gentleman where he lives, with council district?
He's in John's district.
In John White's district?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Where all the roosters are.
That was our last speaker. We'll go ahead and close public comments. Next is the oral report for the county exec.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to introduce Daniel Keen, who we're recommending to you for approval as Director of Corrections. Dan, would you, would you stand? We've had, we spent a lot of time on this appointment, because as you know, this is a very important job within the, within the county. We have a lot of potential liability with our jail and there's a lot of, a lot of interest in what goes on there. So, it was a very difficult choice. We were lucky that we had some really fine candidates, but we, in the end, felt that Dan was, was definitely the best. You've seen his resume, I think you'll agree, he's got a lot of great experience and he was available earlier. If you had questions, then I'm sure he'd be glad to answer any of you, if you still have them today, right now.
Okay.
The only other thing, Mr. Chairman, is I would ask that you remove or not vote on or table or whatever your, the very last thing on the agenda under Parks and Recreation. We don't have a copy of the ordinance yet.
Okay.
Didn't get drafted in time.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Are you sure you want the job after hearing all that? Okay, just want to double check before we do this.
Okay. Okay, let's move on. Consent agenda, any items to be removed?
I would move that we remove the Parks and Recreation as requested.
Second.
I got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other items to be removed?
Motion to approve is amended?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Bills for final passage.
Bills for final passage. Don, are you looking for something? Bills for introduction, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you had, you removed it from the consent agenda, but if someone could make a motion to actually table this item, maybe we are clear.
And second.
To, to table it besides removing it?
He said table, I said second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to bills for final passage, bill number 4590, would you please read it?
Bill number 4590, an ordinance relating to housing and community assistance and one approving the 2018 annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year 2017 through 2019, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorize the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan and two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2018 annual action plan.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none.
An ordinance relating to housing and community assistance and one approving the 2018 annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year 2017 through 2019, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan and two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2018 annual action plan. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to bill 4591, please.
Bill number 4591, an ordinance amending section 405.135B of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, the Unified- Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add storage and accessory structures, sales, rental, and leasing as a permissive use in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, go ahead and read the call roll.
An ordinance amending Section 405.135B of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSC CMO, the Unified Development Ordinance, to add storage and accessory structures, sales, rental, and leasing as a permissive use in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District. Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to bill 4592.
Bill number 4592, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement Amendment 2 Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A2 to extend the project time period to allow for completion of the work for design runway electrical lighting system rehabilitation and new vault at Smart Field Airport.
Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement Amendment 2 Airport Improvement Program Project 16-111A2 to extend the project time period to allow for completion of the work for design runway electrical lighting system rehabilitation and new vault at Smart Field Airport. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to bill 4593.
Bill number 4593, an ordinance approving a donation of right-of-way and temporary construction easement over property owned by St. Charles County to the City of St. Peters to support the city's planned improvements to Mid Rivers Mall Drive from Dyke Club Road to Coderville Parkway.
Are there any questions or comments on this bill? Hearing none.
An ordinance approving a donation of right-of-way and temporary construction easement over property owned by St. Charles County to the City of St. Peters to support the city's planned improvements to Mid Rivers Mall Drive from Dyke Club Road to Coderville Parkway. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
That bill passes. Moving on to bill 4594.
Bill number 4594, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a St. Charles County Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Agreement to create an advisory board of governors for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a St. Charles County Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Agreement to create an advisory board of governors for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
And that bill passes. Finally, moving on to bill 4595.
Bill number 4595, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute form agreements with school districts in St. Charles County to provide for continued placement of school resource officers at schools in those districts.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Read it again, please.
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute form agreements with school districts in St. Charles County to provide for continued placement of school resource officers at schools in those districts. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ilum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
That bill passes. That concludes our bills for final passage. Moving on to bills for introduction, bill 4597.
Bill number 4597, request by Michael Hurlberg, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending ordinance 16-134, which granted a conditional use permit C667 for a winery to John, Stephen, and Jacqueline Schillington, Cynthia Guillantine, and Leslie Criss pursuant to the written request by Chandler Hill Holdings LLC successors and interests to the subject property.
Any questions or comments on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4600.
Bill number 4600, request by Michael Hurlberg, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance amending ordinance 04-33, which granted a conditional use permit C613 for quarrying to Margie Joyce Heeman Revocable Living Trust dated December 9, 1999, property owner and Myco Holdings LLC lessee applicants.
Anybody on the council have any questions or comment on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4601.
Bill number 4601, request by Steve Elman, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to add up to seven citizen members, one per council district, to serve on the master plan steering committee for the 2018 plan update. Be it ordained by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the county executive is hereby authorized to appoint up to one additional citizen member from each council district to the master plan steering committee to serve and participate in the 2018 master plan update. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none. Moving on to bill 4602.
Bill number 4602, request by Craig Tatkowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving an agreement with the City of St. Charles to annex right-of-way in support of the city's planned improvements to Fairgrounds Road.
Any comments, questions? Moving on, I don't think any of the last bills that are tabled are ready to come up at this point, so we'll move on to announcements and miscellaneous. Does anybody have any announcements or miscellaneous?
I'd like to welcome our new Director of Corrections formally, since you are official now, sir, so good luck.
Any other announcements? Not all entertained and motioned.
Motion to dismiss.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.